Additions and corrections to the agenda, and we did get some requests to change or amend the agenda, to move, request to close session, and unfinished business, we moved up to new business, which is the report concerning establishment specialist district. So, your pleasure.
Support.
Motion support for the agenda amended. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any no? Motion is carried. Call taken. Next is pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, thank you. So, I'm entertaining motion for the approval of the March 14th, 2023 regular meeting and the March 14th, 2023 closed session meeting. Your pleasure.
Support.
Motion support. Any comments, questions, corrections, additions, violations? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. And motion is carried. Thank you. Moving down to resolutions, consideration of a resolution approving the Omaha Festival Committee's request to operate their entertainment tent from 6:30 PM till 1 AM on Friday, May 26th, from noon till 1 AM on Saturday, May 27th, and from 12:00 noon to 6:00 PM on Sunday, May 28th, 2023. Pursuant to ordinance number 695, which will know as the city commission to approve the three-day variance to the noise ordinance. Your pleasure.
Support.
Motion support. Comments, questions?
Just a question, do you know whether they got approval to put that on school property this year or not?
They did, John.
Okay, just carry.
Fields being moved around a little bit, that piece of the land is off school grounds.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, no. And I would like him staying, please, as I am on the committee here this year. So, moving down to J, reports of officers, boards, and committees. Commissioners may receive the following reports by one resolution, or any commissioner may remove any item within the section for individual discussion and vote. Tonight, we have a planning commission draft minutes of March 2023 and the city manager's newsletter. Your pleasure.
Move to approve number one, the planning commission.
Support. Motion support. Anybody else? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed, no. Motion for number two then.
Support.
Motion support, okay. I presume you're going to read us.
Yes, yeah.
I'm taking this anyway.
Yes, we have some, obviously, some discussion here on water and sewer rates, so, we're talking from the same information. And let me also send each way. Okay, um, this is gonna be a quite a long topic for this evening, and I apologize, but what we're trying to do, and I was much more hopeful on Friday afternoon when we put this together than what came about today. We did receive bids for our Pine Avenue Sewer Line project, take you from Pine Avenue to the wastewater treatment plant. This is, needs to be done before we do our work to rebuild Pine Avenue, water sewer, and do it all properly, get rid of that belly that is in, sewer line belly that's in Pine Avenue. Well, anyway, long and the short of it is, we received our bids today, and everything else, that bid came at 2.1 million, the low bid. The second bid was just $200,000 less, so they were real close to each other, so it wasn't like, you know, that's, that's the, that's the number.
It's totally bucks, period.
Yep, that's the number. So that does throw some, a wrench, a monkey wrench into the options that we've had here for specifically number three. But if we're to keep on pace to do Pine Avenue in 2025 with the monies that we get from the federal government to, for some of the surface replacement, this has to be done over the next two years, so this is a two-year project. So, anyway, what we've included in the packet that was sent out on Friday was we gave three, three options to look at for the water, rate of service fees, sewer rate of service fees, the water rates for the actual, what we pay for the water, that's created by GAWA, and then we sell to our residents, and San Luis sells to their residents. And then our solid waste, which is our trash recycling contract with the Granger, and then our solid waste, yard waste, which is, you know, go around, pick up limbs, leafing, and that sort of thing. What we had tried to do was would give you three options. The first option was more of a fronting all of the costs up in the first year, and then in the subsequent years, look at 5% increases in those funds going forward, and water sewer, and solid waste, and, but upfront, just because of the capital that we need to do, that would give us enough of a jump start to keep up with our neighborhood street projects that we had planned and we got the millage for. Plus, this also considers us applying and receiving either USDA, largest loan, or a SWIFT loan, which is, we're not counting on, because that one is like a 33% chance of getting, so we're not counting on that one, or bonding, bonding it in some way, and this would give us a jump start on getting that done. Option two was to look at, you know, spreading it out more evenly over the five-year period, but that doesn't front you the money you need on the front end, which we would have to move around some, we would have to move around some of the capital to make that happen. But now that we got those, those numbers in tonight, today, from the sewer, we're going to be moving some things around anyway.
Yeah.
And then the third option, what we were trying to do there was to say, how could we push off, maybe, because our sewer fund was in pretty good shape, the estimates that we had, we could have used our fund balance there, and then in year three, then start moving our rates up there, but that's just not, not in the cards now. So, really, what we're looking at is option one and two for that. And then Curtis did provide what we thought was some, some good numbers, and some of them are still good, but other ones, obviously, like with the sewer line we just got, is not. What we were proposing in all three of these options, but now we're just gonna focus on one and two, those dollars would fund these capitals, what we as presented in that spreadsheet there. But now that, the numbers that we know now for this particular project, we're gonna have to move around some things, and then when we apply for the USDA loan, we're gonna have to roll something into it that won't begin in this, in this coming, this construction season, 2023 construction season. Still doable, but our options are getting more limited on that. Correctly take a look at this, and he did provide a nice spreadsheet also that we passed around to take a look at options, and one and two, maybe that's why we're taking off three, and that's what it's called C, but just take those off. From my, from the average four-person homeowner, four-person family, using 4,500 gallons a month, and that correlates directly with sewer, because there's only a meter coming in for the water, so whatever comes in, we'll be charged for sewer going out. Under the option one, over that five-year period out of pocket for a resident of, in that category, that would be $2,817 over that time period. Under option B, that'd be a little less at $2,378 over that five-year period out of pocket of the increase in, in fees. As you look at the rate options, though, the cumulative rate increase by the year five, under option A, we would be at $54.39 more, actually, at the fifth year than we currently are with our water, wastewater, solid waste, and trash recycle. And under the B option, we'd be at $64.32 by the, the fifth year. We wouldn't generate as much money in B, but by the end of that, because we're spacing those out in double, you know, $12, $13, give or take, over that, those time periods, that does accumulate to a larger fee at the end, which could make that better for us looking into year six, as you, as you're looking into what you'd need going forward. Now, both those rates, we did include depreciations, that was one of the things that the commission had asked. And C, like I said, we're not talking about that anymore, we did not put any depreciation numbers into that. So realistically, A and B are best options there. After today's numbers coming in, we'll work on some things to, to send out to you in between this, this meeting and the next meeting, because what we were hoping to do is have a pretty good feel from this board on which option you felt you'd like to, you know, at least felt most comfortable moving forward with. And on the 11th, which is our next meeting in April, we presented, proposed budget to you, we were hoping to bring you a balance on. That was the goal, at least, and then start going through our review of that from that point forward. So we're gonna have to do some more number crunching here in the next couple of days to help figure out what a more realistic number may be, and these numbers might work as long as we are agreeable to moving some of those capitals around, and we'll get a better idea of which ones we can move around and maybe stay within A, option one or option But there's, all communities are going through this right now, it's not just us. The city of St. Louis, they're doing, looking at a public hearing on 18th of April for improvements in their wastewater system, and they're looking at just in that particular fund, at $34, their first rate increase just for that fund alone. So, that's happening all across the state of Michigan with water and wastewater. But from our standpoint, just so the public knows too, the last time we raised water rates was either 2011, 2012, we are at, ready to serve is at just over $11. Our neighbors are double that, or ready to serve fees, so they're in the $24, $26 range already, and we have, obviously, not kept up with those increases. And then sewer, we're a little closer, we're at $24 ready to serve, give or take right now, and our neighbors are a little bit higher, you know, maybe a dollar or so, but not much. So we've kept up with that one, that's only because in 2016, we had some capital project that we needed to bond, and to get the bonding, we had to raise those rates. So, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a pain that we are the ones that are kind of responsible now to kind of work this out. But on the positive side, I guess there's a positive side, we're looking at this in a five-year plan, whatever option we look at or we end up going with, so we'll have a, we'll know exactly where we're heading in over the next five years, so I guess that's a, you know, there's a positive side to a definite positive side. I guess from there, Curtis did, I think, a pretty good job in option one, option two, breaking down on the per-dollar amount, what that would be for those, those different rates and those different funds. But on that first year, going under option one, it'd be a $39.89 increase on top of what, around the top, what we're currently paying, so that'd be a 40% increase overall. But that's increasing water, sewer to serve, sewer ready to serve, and then the sewer usage, water usage, solid waste, and yard waste to keep those, keep up with those funds. And after that, like I said, it's a 5% increase. Option two, that one's more staggered out, so you're looking at first-year increase would be that $12.63 with increases ranging $5 to 44 cents in those funds. The first year, then the next year, you're looking at basically the same kind of thing, $13.63, the following year, $14, it's over $14, again, 2027, a $13, and then in that fifth year, a $10 increase. So it's kind of like pick-your-poison type thing.
Maybe not a simulator, right?
Yeah.
B is kind of like five equal installments, and A is like 90% down and 10% financed.
Yes.
And C was 50% down and the rest of it spread out.
And that was for, try to give, you know, some, some breathing room in some funds that, at first, we thought, hey, we could use some fund balance, and then, you know, push off a couple of years, but that's not possible now with the number that just came in.
Okay. We have to figure out which one is gonna be the least unappetizing, because whatever we do, we're gonna have to talk it up so people know that, you know, we're not throwing their money away by the 40% increase in water rates, we have not kept up, and that's all there is to it.
Any questions? Another question?
Take Bush to the heap the first year, and then not so bad the next four, or four years in a row to keep?
And front-loading it, just like we just, like you mentioned, that does give us better options at the front end to make sure that we get those funds, so we don't have to push off any of our neighborhood street projects that will help front on our neighborhood street to get that, keep that going within the six years planned. But we will have to move some of the bigger projects that are outside of that around, and then include, we will have to include levels in the USDA, or the SWIFT, or a bottom, there's just no other way around it. We were hoping just to do it with our rates and buy into.
I guess, you know, I just made some notes, I, you know, I think we're gonna wind up with a combination of the two would be my guess. It's gonna be fun, it's not gonna be pleasant for anybody, but I think we, you know, if it took option two, or B, whatever you call it, and add some kind of in-the-middle front-loading on that first year, and then continue with some, again, fairly substantial rate increases from there going forward.
Yeah, and B is scary, because basically, we're coming after the additional $13 every year for the next five years, and it's gonna be hard to choke down. I know, I know. Or do we want to give them the $40 upfront?
Between what's mandated by the state and the Flint.
I know, that's what I say, it's gonna need to be explained. It's gonna need to be explained very carefully to them. We can't do all the stuff that we need to do as a result of the Flint problems, or with what we've got.
We can't keep pushing off.
We can't do it, no.
Well, we don't really have an option with some of these to push off. This, this Pine Avenue thing, it's just, we're gonna be lucky enough to get through the time period that we have. Substation, substation 16, which is the one that we talk about behind the Sisters of Mercy area there, that's on borrowed time also, so these are things that we can't.
Those could be very expensive to do on that emergency basis.
Yes, very expensive. And people will not be happy if those go down, because those will back up a third of the city, Pine Avenue, one of where the hospital comes off onto that one, so it's, there's major implications on this.
Contaminate water in St. Louis, like, they're pulling out for whatever reason, for emergency and fire hydrants and stuff, so, I don't know. Anywhere downstream.
Thank you for all your work on it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Leonard.
Are you looking for a direction on which avenue to kind of, if you don't mind, we can work on some other things, maybe like Mary just mentioned about maybe adding in some extra dollars into the, you know, between option one, option two, but where are you more leaning? Are you more leaning to try to front-end some things, or are you, you know, space them out a little bit?
I would say front-end.
I kind of like the front-end, and the reason that I like it more is that the cumulative increase is $10 less than if we, I mean, we're at a $54 increase as opposed to a $64 increase.
The downside to that is gonna be you're $300,000 a year behind.
Yeah, I know.
At over five years.
Yeah.
So you're gonna be facing the same thing again.
Yeah. And just, and this is depreciation, and, you know, put it, you know, so we obviously haven't been doing that.
But depreciation goes into full balance, right?
Yes, that holds it there, so we'll be in better shape at year five than we are currently, but this will, it gets you a better, maybe a better opportunity to be in a better position in year six than, than this one.
But all of our pipes that are in the ground that are 60 and 70 years old today are gonna be 65 and 75 years old.
But didn't you say that you, the funds would be needed upfront?
That makes it easier for, it makes it easier to keep on task with especially our neighborhood street project, and then give us some breathing room to move around some of these other capitals that are in here, and incorporate those that we can into the USDA or SWIFT loans.
Aside to that, what, did the Harvard come in?
That comes in next week, too.
Okay, alright, just wondering how, where that's gonna be in relation to the budget?
That one we can do, because we have the funds to do that, but if they keep feeding twice as much, it's gonna eat it into that quicker, so we're gonna have to make these decisions here.
I am concerned about how big of a jump that would be in year one, option one, and then the ability of some of our residents to look at that. I don't know if there's something in the middle that we can maybe work out.
We can, we can work on a new option to look at those and try to front-end as much as we can, and maybe give you a little bit of a.
Kind of go in between between what is a front-end halfway, and get closer to 20 bucks first year? That's kind of what I was thinking, that you'll have to run some, Curtis will run some numbers, I'm sure, and come back with us and see how that plays out with them.
Is there a general number that would get us to qualify for some of those USDA loans versus, or grants versus, maybe option two, or would they both get us to? Both will get us in year one? Yes. Yeah, they'll, both of them will get us to be able to apply, and the likelihood would, from what we've been told, USDA, as long as you apply, you're pretty much guaranteed to get the loan, as long as you meet those requirements. And both of those cover it, and like I said, this has even got depreciation figured in, not as much as we, well, now it's more, because obviously, this is one project that's gonna be that, depreciation should be more, but this gets us to that point of applying, and so, gets us, it was gonna get us, like, one, two, within five years, what we had presented, would've got everything caught up and put us on a stable path forward, but with that, that number came in today, it makes us, you know.
From everything that we projected out here is gonna be similarly impacted, so.
Which one are you leaning towards there?
I, just from a simple fact of getting, making sure we have the numbers or the dollars to keep the neighborhood street projects going, because there is no sense of us ripping up those surfaces to replace if we don't redo the water and sewer underneath, and then do the laterals, you know, at what we've been doing. So we need to find some way to front-end, you know, more than what we have in option two, but to Andrew's point, though, and he's right, it's gonna hurt, so we do need to have some kind of a way to front-end some of this. Is there, what, what does that front-end number need to be? Is it 23? We'll have to, we'll have to run some things here in the next couple of days.
That, that would be attractive to see, if instead of a 40% increase, we did a 20% increase each of two years, and then the rest of it in the four and five dollar range. You know, instead of, instead of year one being $40, if that was $23, and then next year is $21 or something, that might be easier for the people who don't have $480 next year to spend on it, so.
Whatever it is, it's gonna be, it's gonna be fresh on everybody, and everybody's gonna be, but just, just know that it's not just our community, this is every single state of Michigan community is going through this.
I think whatever you do, I think you have to keep that depreciation number intact the entire time, or else you're gonna run into this issue again in five years. You know, just, that's why we're fighting them out, is we have it, you know, to balance the budget prior to Curtis getting here, I think that was how they balanced the budget, is, alright, let's just keep cutting depreciation, and now we're stuck with the buildings, we gotta play catch-up. So whatever we do, my vote would be to, to, don't, you can't cut the depreciation ever.
Good point. Alright, we'll work on that over the next couple of days, and just, just set it up for your information, and, and please don't respond to it, because just, you know, make sure it's open meetings, like, so, just wanna get the information out to the commission so they can review it. And if we need to, next meeting is April 11th, but if the commission felt like we needed to sit down and discuss this, we could call a special meeting if we had to, so, but just, just wanted to give, I mean, we have a couple of new commissions and things, so just don't, you know, sorry, just, you can't discuss it back and forth over again, so. Alright, thank you, I do appreciate that. Alright, transit driver comparisons, we did reach out to our neighboring public school systems, see what their drivers are being compensated and how they rate, and they bring us, we all have the same information here, you know.
Different than what's in the packet?
No, it's not different from the packet, no, no, same information, but I just wanted to have it there in case, so it'll make it a little easier. As you look through there, we have Elkhorn Schools, Fulton, Ethica, Shepherd, St. Louis, and then the, the, the low end was 1735, or 32, I'm sorry, 1732, and ranging up to the high end of 25 with the transportation for their, for their hourly rates. And just to, you know, kind of perspective for ours, you know, currently, without the, without the hazard pay, you know, we're at 13, it's nine steps, 1364 to 1775. What we're, you know, recommending as staff and, and the commission to give us approval to do is to go to grade two, and that's, that scale is 1651 to 2144, so again, that's nine steps in that, in that scale, so to get a brand-new driver, no experience, have to teach them from the beginning, get their show for their, or CEOs, it's gonna take them nine years to get to the top. And then also, what we're recommended within this budget year is to lower our transportation knowledge from the .964, 04, to .8, and we can still do our wage, moving our drivers from grade one to grade two to keep us competitive in the transit side of things, and from the school district side of things, and lower the millage. So, that's what we're proposing as staff, and, and looking at everything around us, and, and it seems to be the place, at least the numbers do fit in with what's out there on our grade two.
On the Omaha Public Schools, Fulton, Ethica, are those starting wages, or is there any range that they're?
Those are, those are starting wages, and the way that's written out, most likely what they're doing is each year evaluating what they, what they pay, you know, if they need to go up, I'm sure they decide what to, what to make that, that pay. Ours is set, you know, it's a, it's nine steps in one grade, and that's how we move people through the system, and they've probably made a decision to say, we'll look at that on a yearly basis, budget basis, to, to pay.
The, the $2 hazard pay, does that impact any other groups of employees, or just?
Yep, it's, and Brett and I discussed this, it's, 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 right now, you know, the federal government has put a lot of money toward transit, and the state of Michigan has put a lot of money toward transit, and we've been very fortunate to receive new buses, new vans, the vans are, are the way to go, you know, those have been much more economical, people like riding in them better, they're a little more reasonable to purchase and drive. But there was a time period where we were begging for a new bus, so these things do go in and flows of what equipment you get and those sort of things. But right now, the federal government has said, because of COVID, they, that was hazard pay, our transit workers across the country, that they provided that for, so that is in effect through September 30th, it'll stop on the new fiscal year for the, for the state of Michigan, which is actually.
And that was, that's straight $2 per person, or how did, $2 per person, how'd they touch with that?
Yes, it's $2 per hour per person, that's, that's the, there was no, other than that, that was all the cost, yeah.
So there's no strings on it, no, then no money for the benefit rating that goes along with that, that those other costs that increased?
No. Correct me if I'm wrong, Curtis, it, that did not affect into, you know, like going into the MERS or any of that, that type of stuff? No, no. Correct me if I'm wrong, Curtis, it, that did not affect into, you know, like going into the MERS or any of that, that type of stuff?
Any more questions? And you're confident, before we've talked about how, how this group of employees compares with the rest of the staff. And by doing this, we're not throwing everything out of kilter with everybody else that's driving the snowplows, driving the, everything else we've got and doing all the other.
No.
Ass that need to be done.
No.
I mean, I just, you're always in danger of, when you do something for one group, does that automatically throw everybody else out of kilter? And that was a big concern of mine last time.
It, it does not.
I don't see anything here that sounds.
It doesn't, it doesn't, it does not, like say our public works, snowplow drivers, CDL, those guys start out on grade four. They're right down there. So it's not throwing them off a kilter. You know, I can confidently, when I look through the, the other, you know, transit agencies that are on this list. And then looking at what the, the school districts pay, that grade two, and it's in the range of what drivers are making, so. And like I said, coming in with no experience, you know, it'll take, it'll take you nine years unless you take on a management role or something like that. It can take, it'll take a long time to max out.
More questions?
Alright, one other thing I'd like to get from you tonight, the 20th, especially the planning commission draft in the center of your packets. Was our review from the planning commission for the retail recreational marijuana applications that came in. There was four, we have three licenses available. The planning commission looked at the zoning, made sure the zoning was correct and the setbacks were followed. They all four met that minimum criteria. So all four of those received recommendation to move forward to this board. Now basically what we need to do from here is this board needs to exclude score and award three, three applica, oh, sorry, three licenses that we have for retail. And we're gonna have to do the scoring because we have four applications and only three, three licenses to give out. Now, we can do that one or two ways and staff will find doing either way. One, we could do it as a group, meaning that we would provide each one of you commissioners, each one of the applications, you score that. Though there's a lot of confidentiality that's tied to these marijuana applications, so a lot of the stuff can't, you know, it's not a real public type thing that we can do. But we could, you know, provide that to each one of you and let you know that, hey, you need to keep that confidential as you do your scoring. And then we can either have those score sheets sent to the clerk to, to add up, or we could bring them back here as a board and then talk about it that way. Or you could set aside a subcommittee to go through the scoring. Any one of you can do your own scoring also, but the subcommittee could get into the, let's say, three commissioners, the staff go through them and then. Do it that way and then kind of compare everybody else's with that and then make your decisions from that standpoint of review and, and scoring. So I'm leaving it up to this board how you, what you feel comfortable with and what you'd like to do and, and we're here to help try to make this happen. It'd be great if we could, by no later than our, our April 25th meeting, be able to provide the three licenses that we're gonna give out to those, to those entities and have that done before the end of April. So let's everyone think about that. Any thoughts?
Either way works, right?
I think it would be faster if we each did it rather than, if we go to another committee, then that committee has to set up another meeting time. If we were, if we were to all do it, if everybody is willing to do that, if there's somebody who does not want to do it, then that is out the, out the window.
It needs, and what we would do is most likely give you a thumb drive because there's some, some of these are substantially, but they're pretty repetitive because they're giving you a security plan, disposal plan, all sorts of things. So they're, they're boiler, boilerplate, but as you read through them, those are part of your scoring to make sure that.
What's the location of the fourth applicant? Or can't we discuss?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. The applicant, we have one out of 1325 East of Gira Street, which is the Old Lovdell property there.
Okay.
528 West, down, West Warwick, which is consumed.
Okay.
So 1405 Wright Avenue, which is the former Pizza Hut parcel, and then 1465, which is the empty parcel next to Midas and.
Discount Tire.
Discount Tire.
Okay.
The empty vacant parcel there. And according to our, you know, our scoring scale, that, you know, I've read a copy of that for you guys to take a look at. This board was interested in prioritizing buildings that are currently there and rehabbing things. So that scoring sheet does weigh here on projects that are gonna reuse buildings, that sort of thing, so.
Well, and I guess from my perspective, because my employer is in, owns one of those properties, vacant property.
Okay.
I will probably not be participating in the process.
That takes you out, yeah.
I, I do agree with Rogers', you know, inclination that since everybody has to vote, you kind of all, you have to go through some sort of a process. And it seems to me it's better to just go through it all at once and.
And these things, and you know, in having looked at a bunch of this stuff.
I'm gonna be on the outside of it, I guess, so.
With the medical, we did not this much, but I was on the committee that did the medical. And most of this stuff is pretty yes and no, okay? Applicant is provided rendering of plans facilities proposed to be used. We have that or we don't, okay? And it's there if you do and the rest of it. Applicant describes expected daily number of patients and proposed volume of vehicular traffic. They will have that or they don't have it. It's not, it's not very subjective. It's all pretty, yes, they do, no, they don't.
If I, if I may just briefly, I would just echo what the city manager said regarding the confidentiality of the information. In addition, there's a exemption under the FOIA statute for notes that are preliminary to a final decision. And so your notes and your personal thoughts as to the applications would be exempt at least until the final decision is made.
As you don't share them, right?
Correct.
You have to keep them private.
Correct, exactly, yep.
You can't trade notes.
You're right, no, yeah. Please, please keep them private. And eventually they could be subject to FOIA, but, but not until the final agency decision is made. And then just to echo Roger's statements, I, I think the, his thoughts regarding the subjectivity or rather objectivity is correct and that's intentional. The, sort of the fastest way to get in trouble or to have someone accuse you of wrongdoing is to say.
Your brother-in-law.
Yeah, right. It's difficult to, when you're, when you're on a, a scale with more options, it's really difficult to say, you know, if you're, for example, if you're scoring one to five, it's almost impossible to say. Justify why you gave something a four versus a three versus a two. So everything is set up to try to make it very objective and it just, it's one or zero, they're satisfied or they don't. And just, just to make it very clear that there's, we're just an umpire, so to speak, going balls and strikes and very, very little subjectivity, so.
Okay. No, I guess I, my, what we'll do, we'll create thumb drives for each one of you and you have the score sheets and we'll get those too soon as possible so you can take the, it's, there's four of them in there. There's, there's a lot of information and like I said, but a lot of it will sound familiar when you read the one to the next and the next because they're answering the same questions.
And so just, lastly, just to reiterate, you can orally discuss your findings and your thoughts, so long as it's less than a quorum, obviously, so no open meetings issues. But please keep any written material confidential, at least until the determination is made.
So we will have access to see that if they do indeed have these things?
Yes.
You see the application?
It's in the application, it'll be in the application. And if you need some help, give me a call and we can chat about it and help you. I can do that without causing a challenge. You know, I can work with you directly one-on-one. If you have questions, try to understand what they maybe get asked, or maybe say in a particular section, so.
And you will, you will be able to reference the planning commission's notes as well. So if you see, hey, why did they give a zero in this scenario, you should be able to go back and see, hey, this is, this is why they did it.
They haven't tried to do that.
Yeah, so it should be very, build off what, what they have done and work with that.
And here's the security plan. Applicant has a 24/7 video monitoring of the interior and exterior of the facility. If you have not started remodeling that facility, you don't yet, but if your plan says, I will have cameras at the front corner, the back corner, and three behind the counters, and I have contacted such and such a company to install that. Then that's a one, okay? If they haven't done anything, it's a no, so.
And, yeah, and just, just on that note, all, all of the applicants are affirming under oath that, that their attestations are true. So for example, if they were to say something just to gain a point and then not make any effort to comply, that's fraud. So they, they can't make an attestation just, just to score well. And so, and I, and if, obviously this would be an extreme circumstance, but if, if an applicant committed fraud, then the grounds for the license to be revoked, so. You know, you should feel comfortable taking the attestations contained in the application as, as a true statement.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we'll move forward with that and it goes out to you soon as possible to save time. And then we just wanted to also provide to you before our April 11th meeting, kind of where we're at with the general fund side of things. And we're, and I, me, me personally, after what we've, how we had, what we had to do last year to balance things, we're in pretty good shape right now. We're looking at, we're about 90, $98,000 over. We're breaking basically even on our general fund. What we have already coming in and going out and trying to get some capital, the capital done. One thing that I'm proud of with me and the staff this year, that we're putting aside more than double for capital, general fund capital improvements than what we did last year. And that is more than we've done over the previous two years. I know there was COVID and, and stuff too, but what we plan on doing is by the time we bring back the proposed budget on the 11th. That we will determine which one of these capital to pay off, so we are balanced when we bring that to you on, on April 11th. But I thought it was important for you to see everything that, that we put out there in, as staff to, to do out of the general fund for this year. And then our budget meeting schedule, we just wanted to give you some dates. What we were trying to do is not have any extra meetings if we didn't need to. As you noticed through there, it would be April 11th is our proposed budget meeting, that's a regular meeting. April 25th, budget review to go over the proposed budget, that's a regular meeting. May 9th is the public hearing for the presentation of the budget and review of the mileage rates, that's a regular meeting. And then if we do need a special meeting in between the public hearing and the adoption of the budget on, on May 23rd, we can meet on May 16th if we need to, so. But we're hoping that we'll have everything for you and April 11th, that'll be pretty close. And then obviously, other than what we've talked about tonight from the, the enterprise fund capitals items. But hopefully we'll be able to work those all out without, and not need the extra special meetings, so. But if you want to meet just for, just for fun, we can set that. We have it on the schedule, so if you'd like to meet, so. Thank you.
Any other questions? None. All those in favor have received this report?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say no. Motion's carried. Now, we've got unfinished business. We have a report concerning the establishment of a special assessment district number 2023-1 for construction of sanitary sewer leads. And special assessment district 203, 2023-2 for construction of side mark on Harvard Avenue in conjunction with 2021 capital improvement project. Special assessment district 2023-3 for construction of sanitary sewer leads in conjunction with the North of Washington sanitary sewer replacement project. Your pleasure to receive.
Move to receive.
Motion's court. Any comments or questions? Can I get some background?
Yeah, this is, obviously Harvard Avenue, we're coming into, coming back in and what we're doing in the last probably 10 years or something, give or take. Not only are we replacing wire sewer veins that are in the streets, we're working within the homeowners to put the laterals off of the law, the sewer veins. So we don't have to dig into the street again to replace those. So this is something we started doing about 10 years ago, because no sooner than you put a new street down, someone's line was bad, you had to dig into it. And you cut down the life of that street substantially. But that's why we're doing this.
Okay, any questions? All those in favor receiving that?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No? Then I guess consideration of a resolution to set a public hearing for Tuesday, April 11th, 2023 at 6:00 PM or as soon thereafter as the agenda allows. For the purpose of reviewing special assessment districts number 2023-1 and 2023-2 for the Harvard Avenue Capital Improvement Project, sanitary sewer leads, side and sidewalks respectively. Our pleasure.
Move to approve.
Support.
Motion's court. Comments or questions?
Same reason, the public hearing, yep, the public hearing for it, yeah.
Okay. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion's carried. And then consideration of a resolution to set public hearing for Tuesday, April 11th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. Or as soon as, soon thereafter as the agenda allows, for the purpose of reviewing special assessment district number 2023-3 for the North of Washington sanitary sewer leads construction project. Support. Motion's court. Comments or questions, anybody? Consideration of the dead, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion's carried. Okay. We did those, so under unfinished business, we did, yeah, both of those. We have consideration of a request from the city manager to conduct a closed session, which is permitted under section 8D of the Open Meetings Act of MCL 15 dot 268. Regarding the purchase or lease of real property and a two-thirds roll call vote is required. Prior to do that, before we do that, do you want to do the public comments? I think that might be wise.
That'd be a good idea.
Okay, so what we, real quick, do appropriations, that's, entertain a motion for appropriations?
Move to approve appropriations.
Support.
Motion's support. Any questions? None of those. Hearing none. Those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion's carried. Commissioner comments? Danny, direct to lead us on.
Maybe in the future we just put closed session meetings at the end, just kind of build that in. I think you've moved them a couple of times now, so I think it'd just be good practice just to put them where we want them.
Hopefully we won't need closed sessions soon.
Roger, nothing, I don't think, tonight. Laurie?
Thoughts and prayers for Tennessee. For students in Tennessee.
Um, condolences to Mr. Stupi's family who passed away.
Oh, did he realize?
Yeah, he was a teacher for many years and now a school system and a great farmer. Good man.
I did, wasn't I? Owns all that property, got some?
Drew? Sarah?
Nothing for me, this chair, thank you.
And nothing further for me, so with that, if any members of the public would like to address the mission, please go to the podium, state your name and address, and you have up to five minutes to share your thoughts. Who would like to be first?
Hello, Chris Mull, 218 Grant Avenue. I'm here, I guess, just to, I guess, throw an idea out there. I don't know, I know Eric, you sent the email to the parks people, but these guys don't have any idea of, of the, okay. So there's a, a group of cyclists in the community that would like to establish a pump track in a skills area at one of the city parks. And Eric and I and Tim Lambrecht walk out at Conservation Park and there's lots of options for, you know, putting something like that out there. And we settled on a section of land that's real close to the mountain bike trail, so very close to the, the new restrooms that are out there. And it's basically, we're looking at a 30 by 30 section of land to put in a very, you know, safe, low, low risk, basically BMX track. That would be made out of dirt and it would be about 15 yards by 21 yards. And, you know, we got, we met with about 12 other cyclists in the area. And there are options to make these out of pavement and make them out of asphalt. It's extremely expensive, it's a pretty thin surface. It's extremely expensive, it's a pretty thin surface, you know, how well would that play, you know, if we were to fundraise, you know, the hundred thousand dollars or whatever, you know, um, how long would something like that last in our, our climate? You know, that was a concern. It also is harder on, you know, people's skin if you fall on it, dirt is a little easier. And that's also something that can be modified, and so this group kind of tasked me with, you know, you know, let's, let's try and look at what it would, would be to put in, adjourn one of these tracks. So what we're looking for is hopefully to get, um, in the master plan and eventually get enough information to you guys so we can come up with a memorandum of understanding on usage for this parcel of land. And once that's in place, um, the Central Michigan Mountain Bike Association, and that's why this gentleman is here today, Steve Keely is his name, they'll, uh, start helping us fundraise for this project, uh, because it's dirt, it's not gonna be extremely expensive. A few years ago, the labor cost to put something like this in, um, the estimate from trail builder that I got was about seven thousand dollars. I'm guessing that that's probably double today is, is what it was. So, you know, if it's fourteen thousand dollars, we need the budget for some dirt. Dave mentioned that perhaps some of, uh, the leftover soil from some city projects might have a high enough clay content because you want this to be like an eighty, twenty percent mix so it can be packed in. And so, yeah, so I'm just throwing this idea out there to, to you guys. The part of our plan that we came up with with this group was to, like, the first part of it would be putting in this pump track, uh, because that's not gonna take up a thirty by thirty yard square, uh, and then around it, um, either building or purchasing some obstacles. And they're like a skills type of obstacle, it could be ramps, they could be narrow skinnies that may take a turn, but they're only like this, you know, high off of the ground. And all of these features are something that adult cyclists do enjoy riding, I mean, I think this would bring more people to this trail from other communities, they don't have anything like this in, in Mount Pleasant. I know there's a couple big cycling families in Ithaca that would come up regularly and use it, I know we have some, uh, families that go as far as like Grand Rapids to find something like this, and they wouldn't have to do that here. And, you know, it's something that adults can enjoy and it's a skill-based thing that helps develop skills that kids need to be able to safely mountain bike, and so, you know, this is, I guess, the, the idea anyway, and just kind of throwing that out to you all. As far as, I don't know what's a better description for the parcel of land that we talked about, I've, I've got it.
You gave a good description, it's right across, um, the parking area for the new rest, well, the restroom. Um, it's a piece of land that, uh, that we wouldn't really use for anything.
Behind the chapel.
Restaurant, yeah.
Behind the chapel, right.
It's just, just to the, um, kind of this south and.
South of the, there's an access road that goes into the cemetery, it would be the south.
And, and then, um, Chris did represent, you know, to the, the parks board about this last night, and Chris, you know, they got some, you know, like work to do, he needs to reach out to a couple of these consumers to talk a little bit with them, just make sure that we're good there. But it's a, you know, be all volunteer-driven, like Chris mentioned there, and, um, be like what we do with the disc golf folks, you know, uh, come up with a, an agreement for the use of the land and.
I mean, most of the, I mean, the, once, once the initial shape is, is put in by the, um, this trail builder who's based out of Holly, Michigan, it's mostly just gonna be volunteer time, I mean, it will need to be shaped, it'll need to be packed down, um, it needs water, and there is, if we run, right now, if we ran a hose far enough, that would be workable. Ideally, we'd like to have, you know, water closer to it, the building that, that's there has water run to it, but right now, there is a hose hookup on the south side of the bathrooms, and so we could, you know, you need to water the soil down and pack it in. And then once it's set, you don't typically have to do too much maintenance to it, but it would need, you know, continual trimming and, and continual maintenance to some, to some degree anyway, so.
Chris, what happens when the skateboarders get hold of this? Anything bad or?
I mean, it's dirt that I don't know that they can, I don't know that they're gonna be too successful in, in trying to use that, you know. On the paved ones, depending on how they're, they're set up, um, they welcome, you know, skateboarders on them and stuff like that, I don't, my concern with this track in general is if, what's gonna happen when someone gets onto it with anything like this time of year? You know, it's probably gonna put some grooves in it that will need to be, you know, wetted down and smashed out and, and things like that. That's really the only damage that I can see coming from it. What do you know, Steve, about, about, I guess, any damage that might occur and that sort of thing to these?
I think that's up to the city and, so, so Chris is volunteered to be the trail coordinator, so that's gonna be a relationship to, and you may have to close every time. If it's real wet, it's just not worth letting people ride.
Or prohibit, you know, skateboarders or something like that.
That's very common to do that, because it's, it's just causing so much damage. And you just have to wait for the hose to settle from, right, you can say, hey, it's cold right now, come back when it's dry.
So, I mean, as far as, it would be nice timeframe-wise if we had enough things in place that, you know, we'd be able to apply for some community foundation grants in July, you know, so, I mean, that's kind of the timeframe in my mind, if that doesn't happen, you know, then that doesn't happen, and if this spot ends up not being the spot where it ends up being, that's fine too, but having it as close to the mountain bike trail just kind of builds on the, the synergy, you know, of use that's already there, so.
Anybody have some questions? All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
So anyone else that would like to address the commission? I don't see too many filled up, so, uh, I guess with that, we'll, uh, entertain a motion to go into closed session. Motion support.
Fisher Alma?
Yes.
Commissioner Barrett? Uh, Vice Mayor Harrington? Fisher Harrison?
Yes.
Commissioner Pitts?
Yes.
Commissioner Wornick?
Yes.
Mayor Nate?
Yes.
Thank you.
With that, we move to closed session, thank you everyone.